I will call the Cookeville City Council meeting for Thursday, August 15th. The order may have a roll call.
Please.
Councilman Baji here. Councilman Walker here. Mary Wheaton.
Here.
Vice Mayor Eldridge here. Councilman Gilbert here. Five person.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to ask those that wish to do so to stand for the invocation given tonight by Pastor Mark Goff, Washington Avenue Baptist Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Can we pray for a moment? But again, we thank you for this wonderful day you've given to us. Thank you for the council. We pray that you'll guide and lead them. The deliberations we're having this evening. Just thank you for this wonderful city of Cookeville that we live in. We pray continue, Lord, to bless this area. And thank you for your grace that you've imparted to us. Thank you for Jesus who died upon the cross and through him we have eternal life. In his wonderful name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Constitution of America, the Constitution of Nations, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Goff. Item three, consider approval of agenda as presented. Are there any changes?
No changes.
Do you have a motion?
Motion to per.
Motion made by Councilman Walker. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Eldridge. Go ahead and vote on that.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Five A, old business, consider approval of minutes of council meeting held on August 1st, 2024. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Walker is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Eldridge. Any discussion from the public on that? Discussion from council? Go ahead and vote.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Five B, consider on second and final reading ordinance O240820, amend the Cookeville Municipal Code Title VIII, Alcoholic Beverages, by inserting a new chapter five to be entitled Consumption of Alcoholic Beverages on Public Properties and Public Streets. Mr. Mills.
Mayor, council members, as we noted at first reading, the council had appointed a five-person committee for the purpose of developing an ordinance that would establish a process and procedure for allowing events with alcohol on certain public properties and streets. Ordinance 240820 creates a new chapter in Title VIII of the municipal code, which would establish such a process and procedure. At first reading, the ordinance was amended to delete all streets as authorized locations for a special event permit for the consumption of alcoholic beverages and to add properties owned by T T U, Tennessee Tech, and the Tennessee Tech Foundation as authorized locations. All other provisions of the ordinance are unchanged. So I've made those changes to the ordinance, but after giving some thought, I'm not certain what the council recommended for the, one of the amendments at the first reading is exactly what was intended by adding T T U Foundation properties or a lot more of those other than the golf course. It was my understanding that the intent was to allow events at the Tennessee Tech campus and at the golf course and no other properties through the, that are owned by the foundation. For example, the foundation owns the parking lot on the other side of First Baptist Church. So I don't believe that was intent and that's my assumption. Assuming that is the intent, I would recommend that the ordinance be amended to specify that properties owned by T T U on the main campus and the golf course owned by the T T U Foundation are authorized locations. So that's my recommendation for changing the wording there, as you can see in section eight, five oh one. If the ordinance is approved with the recommended amendment, the consumption of alcoholic beverages would be authorized at the following public locations, subject to compliance with provisions specified in the ordinance. First, it would be allowed at special events at the Cookeville Performing Arts Center. It would be allowed at City of Cookeville conceived and produced events at the Performance Pavilion at Ogwood Park. Be allowed at properties owned by Tennessee Tech on the main campus. Be allowed at the golf course owned by the Tennessee Tech Foundation. Would be allowed at the Putnam County Fairgrounds, current or future location with approval of the county commission. And will be allowed at the Leslie Town Center, including the contiguous parking lot with the approval of the Public Building Authority. Again, I want to express my appreciation to the committee members that served on the, that served on the committee, Alma Anderson, Anna Dunn, Jay Albright, Jill Horner, and Laura Wolf Woodford, for their hard work on preparing this ordinance. This of all the ordinance, I believe, achieves what the council asked the committee to do with the amendments we've discussed, and I would recommend for its adoption.
Thank you. So we'll need a motion in a second to open it up to do the amendment, correct?
Yes.
Correct, thank you. So do I have a motion on five B?
Somebody.
Motion made by.
We want to make a motion, subject to the recommendations.
We need to open it up first.
Make a motion.
And then we have to amend it. Yeah. And then we make.
On second reading.
Yeah. And then we make the motion.
I guess, as I guess secondly. Then you can discuss James' suggestion. And then the other suggestion anybody wants to make.
Okay. So I've got a motion, drop second.
Second.
Second by Councilman Gilbert. Any discussion from the public on this agenda item? Okay, see. Oh, go ahead. If you have, you'll state your name, city or county, three-minute time limit when you hear the timer. Write off your comments.
My name's Jack Gill, a little bit 1382 Ivy Lane in Cookeville. Thanks to the committee and the commission and the council for a bigger service to the community. I'm going to just read from a letter that I sent at the first reading that you had a couple of weeks ago. I mean, in the interest of time. I'm writing this to voice my concern in regard to ordinance 24820, consumption of alcoholic beverage on public properties and public streets for its first reading, scheduled for eight one election day, Cookeville City Council meeting, which I'm a neighbor to attend due to working on election day poll precincts. I stand with fellow citizens who are far using public property and streets for the benefit of the general public good and are opposed to this ill-conceived ordinance to appease special interest over the greater public good. You are well aware that drug abuse and the tenacity tendencies of its collateral consequences lead to serious issues and damage lives that multiple civic governments, law enforcement, healthcare, religious groups cope with every day. There is no one way to determine who will be the next victim to fall to drug abuse. But you do know that everyone's journey begins with, when they are encouraged and reinforced, take those first steps down the path toward abuse and addiction. What you allow, you teach. This council has a perfect opportunity to make the wise decision for the public good, reverse a precedence of alcohol consumption on public property and streets that should never have been allowed in the past had the devastating collateral consequences been understood. Our family, along with countless others in the upper Cumberland, have not gone unaffected by this drug abuse and addiction. The future of the ordinance now rests on your judgment and subsequent vote that will affect approximately 35,000 Cookeville residents, who general welfare and best interests make up the public good. There are ample private venues available for the citizens to, so inclined as the drug culture in the upper Cumberland has flourished over the past 50 years. Therefore, I ask you vote no to approving ordinance 240820, which is if approved, the city will be complicit in exacerbating the drug abuse problem for future generations. And we also, this council has also gone on record as being opposed to the methadone planning, which is another drug. So if you're dealing with alcohol, if you're dealing with methadone, you're dealing with drugs and the potential for overdose or abuse and overdose or addiction.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak? Okay, we'll go ahead and open it up for council discussion.
I was worried because maybe we're just, for Mr. Gill's sake, that since he wasn't able to attend the last meeting, to clarify and confirm that the streets have been taken out of this ordinance. I'm just making sure you're aware of that.
So I will entertain a motion to amend it.
I have some discussion.
Okay. Go ahead.
You know, I didn't vote for this ordinance before abstaining because last December, we voted out the ability for good groups in Cookeville to get together, celebrate, and raise funds to events that serve alcohol. They, this has been portrayed as an alcohol event or an alcohol thing, but really it's just a celebration. It's just a gathering of community people coming together. There happens to be alcohol served at the event. It happened on, they, they would happen on public property that's something that's been part of our city. It's been part of our, our secret recipe that makes Cookeville a great place for all to live. We asked this council, three to two, voted to remove the ability for these groups to have alcohol in those areas on the promise that we would provide a space to do that. We even had a committee work on this for many months. And it took many months to get this done. We titled it the Consumption, Chapter Five, and it's still titled this, Chapter Five, Consumption of Alcoholic Beverages on Public Properties and Public Streets. Title hasn't changed. We've taken all streets out of it. We've taken the park out of it. We basically aren't going to allow it anywhere except to Putnam County Fairgrounds and Leslie Town Center parking lot. So it still could happen in our city. It still could happen in certain areas. So it's not eliminating it. It's not one way versus another. It's just narrowing a scope of an ordinance to try to make it as difficult to do something as possible. And I don't believe in legislating that way. I don't think that's a good way to take, take away people's rights to do something, take away communities' ability to come together and celebrate, and then put rules in place that make it so hard to do something, that there's such limited area to do it. If you're just going to say no, say no. But if you're, if you're going to say, yes, maybe, I'm going to pretend to make this available, but we're not really going to make it available, I don't think that's a good thing for the community. I think you need to stand one way or another on this. I can't vote for an ordinance that is written in such a way that it limits people's ability to do things. And if, if without proper changes, without sticking to the nature of what we said we were going to do back in December, this would be a hard ordinance to vote for. I'd furthermore like for us to take the time to listen to our businesses. You know, since our discussion in the first reading, we've talked about the ability to have this downtown and have businesses sponsor the applicants. So the wounded warriors could come and close a street and have an event where they serve beer at this, on the street. And that's something that's happened in the city in the past. Or other restaurants or businesses have the opportunity to expand, celebrate an event such as, maybe it's the business's birthday celebration, or maybe it's an annual event that the Main Street programs are doing. It's an event meant to progress business on our main streets. We haven't taken the time as a council, even though the committee had good opportunity to listen to these businesses or set a time to meet with the businesses on Main Street. And I would move for us to postpone this to a later date and meet with the downtown businesses and ask them what works on the streets where they do business.
I'd like to make the same, just now we've spoken with businesses and there are actually two business owners on the committee that did not want it in front of their businesses because of the impact. And we also all received email from businesses that didn't want it in their free yard.
Hang on, hey, you. Councilman Walker made a motion. So there's going to be a second to that amendment? For that, before what he suggested, his motion is just, his motion to amend is discussed. There needs to be a second.
What was the motion doing? It was just the motion to postpone this, getting further input from the business owners on Main Street.
Now I'll second that motion for discussion. It sounds like all I wanted to, yeah. And then now I'll go ahead, Ollie.
Discuss.
Yeah.
Discuss the original and the amendment.
The amendment.
All of the complete discussion.
Yep.
So to circle back around on that, you know, we had business owners on that committee. They did not want it in front of their businesses because of the, it's detrimental to their business. And we also had other businesses reach out to us and say, hey, we don't want this on our front doorstep. And what we did is we moved it out of the streets and they can still have a downtown presence in the parking lot at the Leslie Town Center. And they can also have it at the fairgrounds wherever that may be in the future. And there are venues for that too. Like you have a venue downtown, that's a private venue, that's right downtown, right there next to the depot, that can facilitate that as well. So it's not like we're prohibiting anything. We're not taking away anyone's rights. They've never been able to walk down the street, holding a beer, drinking a beer, anything like that, ever.
So as the council was updated in this process, the business owners actually proposed in the committee that the businesses have the ability to vote or allow one group over another. And that was their main concern for these things taking place. It was for outside groups or groups that they would have no, that the entire business district would have no say so because of, because of our intent to close the area in the park. Any group, whether they were associated with a business downtown or not, could go downtown and close a street and have whatever event they wanted to have, and they could have alcohol at that event. And the businesses didn't think that was a great idea because it did, it could, it could be motivated not to support the businesses. It could be motivated not to support Main Street. And they even proposed that we have a voting mechanism that allowed them to vote whether or not to have those events or not as part of our, my understanding of this ordinance. And James, you can correct me if I'm wrong. Is that, is that incorrect?
Well, what they did, what we contemplated was for any portion of any street closed, that all business property owners, residents along that street had to approve. So it wasn't, it wasn't a majority. It was every business property owner had to approve before you could close the street for one of these events. And that's when our attorney advised us that that was not appropriate. So that was taken out of the draft that we have before you now.
And so there was an idea that the businesses would support this if they could have a say so. We presented and mentioned that the idea of business sponsorship wouldn't be seen in the same legal light as a voting mechanism. And so if a business on a specific block that may be closed had, if they could find enough sponsors to close each block or close multiple or even a single block, that these, some of these events could still take place with the businesses supporting them. And it would limit outside groups who couldn't find sponsors from utilizing those streets on Main Street. I spoke with the business owners on the committee and I've spoke with other business owners downtown. And this is an interesting concept, one that the council needs to take time to write into this ordinance and listen to the business owners on. I've also heard feedback from business owners saying that they don't understand why it'd be limited to nonprofits. Why couldn't a business actually celebrate its own business downtown in such a way that they could ask for a street closure if it could be sponsored? And so I'm, I'm not going to present an amendment that would change this bill to allow all these things to happen because I think it's something that this council should work on. And I think it's something that we should reach out to the businesses, invite them in and see if there's a way to make Main Street work from, and hear from them directly. And I think that's the best way to move forward in this. We, we, there's nothing that's going to happen between now and the end of the year. We've still got plenty of time. The seasons are going to change and no one's going to want to do events like that outside. So we have the opportunity now to postpone this, to take it back and look at it and really try to look into this idea of sponsorship and create an area where this can happen. I mean, it just, it baffles me that we're about to pass an ordinance that's titled Consumption of Alcoholic Beverages on Public Properties and Public Streets. There's not a single street that we're allowing it to happen. And it just doesn't make a lot of sense. And it's not a good way to legislate, to take something away from people, promise to give it back, and then limit it down to such areas that it's not attainable. And that's all I have to say.
We've got a motion in a second to postpone. Is there any more discussion from the council on postponing?
I, I think it's worth noting that postponing it leaves Tennessee Tech and the fairgrounds just kind of out there in the ether, just adrift. I think postponing it's not being a good partner to those folks that are good partners to us. So dealing again with the matter at hand is just probably more this, along the lines of the spirit of what we've been contemplating the whole time, which is how nonprofits can or cannot engage alcohol in their fundraising. And we've given them a space to do it, and I think it's unfair to our partners, we can't name them, the county and tech, to leave them, you know, in a place they were not. And that was never the intent, was to change what they have been doing. So I, I don't support postponing it.
So the only thing that limits it to nonprofits is the language in these ordinance that we're about to pass. So it's us limiting it to nonprofits. It's not that we are targeting nonprofits, it's not that it's a nonprofit issue. This is an issue that's been brought to the city by anyone. It's an issue that was born out of the council last year, and then we took away these rights from people.
No, it was again, I'll, I'll repeat as I did last meeting. It was born out of illegal recognition that we had a dysfunctional ordinance that could not be administrated. I, I, I moved to.
And this would solve all of those issues.
I moved to terminate discussion, go to vote.
Sam, you. No.
Second.
Second on that.
Second.
Okay, so we've got a motion in a second to.
They postponed. Now we'll vote.
Okay, well, I didn't get a chance to speak.
Sorry.
Yeah.
I'll take that motion.
Okay.
Second.
Second.
Okay, thank you. I know, I know. I know, that's okay.
Single members.
I just, I just.
A minute ago, you said you were finished.
It's okay.
To your word.
It's okay, no, I, I just do want to speak as well and do clarify that the, the fairgrounds did have the ability to sell alcohol, to have alcohol previously. We are not restricting them in any way. That, that has been an issue. So we're not taking that away or putting that back in. That was already, that was already present, correct? Just clarifying.
If the city approved and the county.
And the city of council, yeah, so that is, yeah.
Fairgrounds could have had beer, I believe. I'm not sure about alcohol or beer for sure.
Okay. And I do, I think this has created more discussion and I too would like to have more discussion about it. I think, you know, opening up the discussion about businesses versus nonprofits and things like that. I, I, I do, I feel like this, this, this isn't, this isn't the best thing that we've, that we've done. So that was my, that was my discussion. Now, if anyone, does anyone else have any more discussion?
Well, you know, we've been working on this for months. And it's, I have, all I've heard is businesses say they're opposed to it. I haven't heard a business say anything about that idea. If they have, we've been working on this for months. Why haven't they not come forth? Is any business here? Okay, no business here. So there's no business here to support that. I just think we just move on and go because they haven't talked to us. They may have talked to you. They've had a whole week to talk to us. I haven't had any. I've just had more people say, please don't allow it. Please don't allow it. Please don't. So, and we have the one business like Ollie had said, downtown, open air, welcoming, one of the nonprofits already has been in the newspaper. They're welcoming a nonprofit to be there and have their event there. So we have something downtown, outside, in an event area. So I think we, we've done our due diligence. I'd like to say one more thing, just also, we can always, so we don't leave these other entities in limbo, we can always come back, circle back around, have that discussion, and amend this with something that may work, that may, you know, that, that we could, you know, stress the numbers on it.
Yeah, what's, what's done now, we can, we can always come back and amend too. That is a possibility as well, so.
So if there is business out there, we'll, we'll come talk to us about it.
We've got a motion in a second to postpone. So I was going to go ahead and take a vote on that.
Exactly.
Yeah. So any more discussion on that? Okay, so we've got a motion and a second to postpone. So we'll go ahead and take a vote on that to postpone the second reading and have more discussion.
All votes correct. Three no, most of the fails.
Okay, so now we'll have more discussion about the ordinance with the amendment. This is where, if, if there is more discussion, we can have it, but also entertain a motion to amend the ordinance and go back to the original one.
Well, you have the original ordinance right now. And then Mr. Mills suggested.
So I need a, I need a motion for that.
A motion to amend.
I'm.
Get a second, get a second.
Discussion.
Yeah, well, yeah. So I, I'm happy to make the motion, the motion to amend it for the properties of T T U, main campus and the golf course, be the only T T U campuses. That's correct, James, right? We want to, main campus.
Allow.
Allow it on main campus and the, yeah, that golf course, okay. So I'll, I'll make that motion. Is there a second for that motion? Then we can have more discussion.
Second.
Okay, second from Councilman Gilbert. But now we can have a discussion on that, where the ordinance is the whole.
Would T T U not have to get permission to use their parking areas?
For campuses.
Yeah. So, I mean, I don't know why we treat their property any different than private individuals or anyone else in the community. If, if they can make that decision for themselves, I don't know why we should regulate there. Just because, I mean, they still have authority, even though it's public property. So we could just let them have that authority over their property.
We drafted this, Eric, about Tennessee Tech at the advice of the attorney at last meeting. That's where all this came up.
But then we inadvertently.
We didn't have them in here, if you remember, the, the cause, we were concerned about the golf course, which, as far as I know, always had, which is not, it's not been owned by tech except for several years.
The concern was when we did that, we opened up the parking lot property down here.
Well, that, that, well, there's two issues here. One was first trying to allow, to make it clear that, that if you had events at the golf course, you could have alcohol there. Which our understanding too, that tech has events where they serve wine or something for events on campus. So that's why we did that. But the motion was to do tech and the tech foundation. Then we, after I looked at this, tech foundation also owns the Regions Bank and that parking lot. So I don't think that was intent. I think Danny's intent, our attorney's intent, and y'all's intent. And that's why I made the recommendation I did, was to only let that happen at Tennessee Tech campus and the golf course, be specific about it, not the rest of the properties owned by the foundation. And they may, they own several properties, but.
Foundation.
Did I, did I explain that?
Yeah, correctly.
Yes, yeah.
You're not talking about the property down across, across Front Street that we, that we.
I'm talking about the Regions Bank and the parking lot behind it. That's owned by the foundation.
Yeah.
And that's why I don't think it was y'all, the council's intent to let that be a location where you could have events with alcohol.
I think it was. Property that's owned by the Baptist church.
No.
At least for twenty years.
No.
So I, I think it was just my intention to let tech regulate themselves and any property they own, whether it's Tennessee Tech or the Tennessee Tech Foundation. I think they can do that for themselves, just as any private citizen would regulate their own personal property in this regard. I mean, we can just.
Permanent to sell beer, just like UT does to sell it and even stank them. I don't think, I don't think they can just make an eating. But we're good, we're good because we're owned by the state.
But I, I, yeah, I think.
By local laws.
I think my point would be is we would allow them to do it if they wanted to. And if they didn't want to, they could just simply not apply for it or not do it. Like they'd still have control of their property. And so they, they would, no one could come and ask on tech's behalf.
If I said, do tech have any say in this?
Well, that'd be up to them if they want to have an event with alcohol.
They'd have to make the second application as anybody else did, I think.
Yeah, I agree.
By limiting.
I think the intent would return back to where they were. And I think that's what.
I'm going to go through this.
We're trying to clean them and make sure that we didn't add to or subtract them.
Because they originally were not allowed, like if they wanted to have something at Regions, they were originally not allowed to have that, correct?
Get back to the baseline. If they want to come talk to us about that, that's another discussion. But if, we're trying to just kind of neutralize that, making sure that by referring to public property, we didn't inadvertently change their, you know, operations. And that's what I think James is trying to clean up here.
Well, again, we put this in at the advice of our attorney. We didn't have the included, and I guess the way Eric stated this, what we, what our first thought was is this, tech, you know, is another level of government, I guess, state government, and we'd let them do. But, you know, I, we put this in because there were concerns about the golf course. And we also knew, we wanted to clarify that tech could have events because they do have events there with alcohol. And that's all we were trying to do was clarify that they could continue as they're currently operating.
And I think this would satisfy.
Amendment does is limit for the foundation and the, and have a event, just all your, all your amendments on us. And the state has that statute, they allow alcohol on golf courses like Old River Valley and things like that. So, but tech still, tech and the tech foundation still has to comply with local laws regarding alcohol use and beer use and things like that. So, but the limitation under the amendment, it's a nation, not from wherever they own property all over town. They can buy it and sell it anytime, but it limits it to the property they own out of the old Cookeville Country Club. So that's the, and I think that's really a minor amendment. I don't think that's a major amendment. So I think we could, I think the council could pass that on second reading without any issue.
So. I just, I don't think there's a risk to the public letting tech regulate their own properties regardless of where they are. And so I think that was my point. This.
Well, I do think, I do think there's. Well, I do think, I do think there's one thing to add about that Dan mentioned is if.
The foundation's a different entity.
Yes, it is. That's right. So we needed to be clear about that, but address, trying to address Eric's concern about the university. Um, I don't disagree, except for the fact that. If they want to have in their new stadium, sell beer or have events in that facility up there, um. They have to be approved to be able to sell beer. That was one of the concerns and the ordinance went there and I.
Well, so right here, we are changing, the recommendation is to change eight five oh one.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And eight five oh one says that you, to have it on public property or streets, you have to follow these rules except for, especially events. Except at the Public Art Center, Dogwood Park Pavilion and Tennessee Tech and the foundation. So. And if we do this amendment, we are just saying that. The main campus and the golf course don't have to abide.
Don't have to abide.
Doesn't have to abide by this ordinance.
But they could still.
They can still do what they do.
They could do what they do, but they would have to get the special.
So all we're doing is adding the word golf course after foundation.
Tennessee Tech University.
So many words, yes.
And, yeah.
So at that point, tech would be able to continue to, um, pull a special events beer permit. If they are having an event at the university center, uh, for their, for whatever, um. They're doing, um, they would still be able to sell beer with a normal beer permit at their golf course.
Yeah, but they still have to comply with the city beer permit and the state with license.
Yes.
Have license, um. Bartender, so to speak, uh, dispense there.
Yeah, so.
Have a carry for it.
No. So this, like I said, this is, this is saying that these tech properties that we're going to, to designate do not have to abide by this ordinance. Which I believe is what Councilman Walker is stressing, that we don't, we don't want to do.
Yeah, no, I don't want to regulate, yeah.
So I believe the amendment does that.
It limits it so that the foundation properties would be regulated. Except for the.
Yes, that's correct.
Except for the golf course.
That's right.
So we'd be putting regulations on any T T U foundation property that wasn't the golf course. A layer of like regu- regulate. They already have regulations. They still have to get a permit. They still have to go through all that, but we're adding a layer prohibiting it in any property that's a Tennessee Tech foundation, whatever. That's not the golf course, returning it to the way it was. That's correct. The way it was as of January.
Any more discussion on that? All right, so we'll go ahead and take a motion. Yeah, we're going to vote on the amendment and then we'll have to go back and vote on the ordinance as amended. I've been reading, I'm, I've been doing this two years now. I've almost got, just kidding, no, don't. Um, all right. So we're going to vote on the motion to amend the ordinance. Uh, to say T T U main campus and the T T U foundation golf course that do not have to apply to that. So everyone clear on what we're voting on, adding the, that language. Okay, take a vote.
All votes correct. Or yes, motion carries.
Okay, so now we're going to go back and vote on the ordinance as a whole unless there are any other amendments.
Ordinance as amended.
And the ordinance as amended. Dang it, call me out. Okay, all right. So the ordinance as amended, okay, not as much apparently, just to Cliff Notes. Uh, so we're going to vote on the ordinance as amended. With the addition of the T T U main campus and the golf course for the Tennessee Tech Foundation, no other amendments. Any more discussion on that? Okay, go ahead and take a vote on the ordinance as amended.
All votes correct. Or yes, motion carries.
Thank you. We've got.
This is a line or amendment that constitutes a second reading.
Thank you, okay.
The final reading.
Second and final reading, yes, okay. Um, so we will move on to the consent agenda. Six A, consider declaring surplus vehicles and six B, consider awarding bids for inventory items. Is there a motion on the consent agenda? Motion made by Vice Mayor Eldridge, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Mbachi. Um, this is a consent agenda. Does it require any public discussion? So we'll go ahead and take a vote.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Seven A, consider resolution R twenty four zero eight eighteen, authorizing the city manager to submit a project to the Tennessee Department of Transportation statewide partnership program. Mr. Ward.
Thank you, Mayor Councilmembers. Uh, the Tennessee Department of Transportation, following passage of the twenty twenty three Transportation Modernization Act, introduced the statewide partnership program. Uh, through the program, T dot states they are committed to working with Tennessee's local jurisdictions to identify priorities and accelerate projects with local funding and support. The program is a critical avenue for communities to provide input on T dot's ten year plan. T staff has observed increased traffic congestion on South Willow Avenue at the westbound off ramp of I forty continuing to the interstate drive intersection. A street improvement project has been identified to construct a dedicated right turn lane on South Willow Avenue onto Interstate Drive intended to alleviate some of the observed congestion. Resolution R two four oh eight one eight would authorize the city manager to submit a project to T dot's statewide partnership program, committing the city. To funding twenty five percent of the project cost not to exceed five hundred thousand dollars. I recommend approval of the resolution. Happy, happy to answer any questions from council on this.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
The move.
Motion made by Councilman Baji, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Eldridge. Any discussion from the public? Discussion from council? Okay, take a vote.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Seven B, consider resolution R twenty four zero eight twenty one, authorizing the submittal of a community development block grant, disaster recovery block grant action plan. Mr. Mills.
Uh, Mayor, council members, the city of Cookeville and Putnam County have been allocated ten point eight million dollars from HUD through the. Region Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Fund, which results from a declaration, um, from the president, uh, relating to the twenty twenty tornado. Um, projects for, that are eligible in this, under this are must be benefit or benefit to be located within the area damaged by the twenty twenty tornado, tornado. This is not a competitive grant. This money is ours to utilize provided we submit, uh, an action plan meeting the state specifications. The money would be divvied between the county and the city. Um, the county has, um. Proposed dividing the property by eighty percent to the county and twenty percent to the city, uh, based on the level of damage that occurred in the city versus the county. And I think it's, and we're all aware that the county did. Suffer quite a bit more property damage than did the city, although ours is very substantial. So this would result in the city receiving approximately two million dollars. Um, it's my understanding the county will be using their portion of the funds for construction at the fairgrounds in terms of building a, a facility where. Uh, a shelter for people during a storm, which I think is a good use of the properties. Um, but we've reviewed this and we believe the best use for our portion of the funds would be for improvements to. The sewer system that serves that area. Um, the capacity at the, uh, Can Creek, um, pump station, um, is at a. Point where we can't sustain any more development in that area or redevelopment. And this pump station does serve the area off seventy all the way to Locust Grove, where many of the homes that were in the city were damaged. So upgrades to this, um. Pump station are needed to have new development and redevelopment in that area. Um, and that would be my recommendation for using the funds. As I said, we must submit an action plan. If there'll be a joint action plan with, with the city and the county, um, to we'd both identify our projects. And how we plan to divide the ten point eight million dollars, um, and that has to be submitted by September, end of September. I've contacted the development district. They've agreed to let us or to prepare this action plan or to assist us with the preparation of the action plan. We must have a contract by the end of twenty twenty four. Um, the project, the funds have to be expended by April of twenty thirty. And we would easily do that. Now, this is a reimbursement type grant, so we would incur the costs and then be reimbursed, um, our portion of that up to the maximum that we give, um, which again is a little over two million dollars. The, the resolution that you're considering would authorize the city manager to submit an action plan for the allocation of this city couples portion of the C D V G disaster recovery fund specifically for sewer improvements. It will benefit. The portion of the city damaged by the twenty twenty tornado, and I respectfully request your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
To approve.
Motion made by Councilman Baji, seconded by Councilman Walker. Any discussion from the public? Question from council? Take the vote.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Seven C, consider resolution R twenty four zero eight twenty two, allocating a portion of the American Rescue Plan Act funds for the purchase of property for the North Washington Fire Station replacement. Mr. Mills.
Mayor, council members, in twenty twenty one, the city of Cookeville was awarded ten million, two hundred ninety seven thousand, seven hundred thirty seven dollars and forty two cents in grant funds through the American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty one, or affectionately known as ARPA. Half of these monies were received in twenty twenty one and the remainder in twenty twenty two. So we've placed those in our, uh, savings accounts. Um, we had a, some discretion on how these funds could be used, but. Um, they have to be used by December thirty first, twenty twenty four. As we talked about Monday, the council early on decided that we wanted to use these funds. For things that we would see a long-term benefit to the community, not some quick flash in the pan expenditure of the cash. Um, the first, uh, category or first item that we used committed funds to were eight and a half million dollars to be used for water and sewer projects. So again, that's an example of where you're going to get a long-term benefit. Of these tax dollars going into, to benefit the city and, um, the area around the city. We've also committed two hundred thousand dollars for the purchase of property for the expansion of Can Creek Park. Uh, we spent a hundred and ten thousand dollars to replace the roof at Leslie Town Center. We also gave two hundred fifty thousand dollars to Highlands Residential Services for construction of housing for homeless. I think that's the Red Bud Project, which is still underway. So we have six thou, six hundred forty eight thousand, nine hundred seventy seven dollars and forty two cents left, uh, out of our ARPA funds that we need to allocate. And I'm recommending we use the remaining balance to purchase the property for the construction of the new fire station or fire station two on North Washington Avenue. Those are properties located. At eighteen oh six and eighteen sixteen North Washington, which happens to be the combined purchase price of six hundred fifty thousand dollars. So that works out pretty, pretty well. And I request your approval to allocate the remaining ARPA funds for this purchase.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
To approve.
Motion made by Councilman Walker, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Eldridge. Any discussion from the public? Question from council? We'll vote.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Seven D, consider authorizing the city manager to enter into a professional service contract for phase two, uh, the enterprise resource planning, Solting, Ms. Immel.
Mayor and council members, earlier this year, we started a project to modernize our business processes citywide, considering new software and technology that's available. Um, it's a project that's involved in three phases. Phase one is evaluation and needs assessment. Phase two is the R F P process and phase three would be the implementation. Um, earlier this year, you approved us engaging soft resources as an E R P consultant to help us with this project. Um, we've recently completed phase one of the project. So this evening, we are requesting your approval to engage soft resources to move forward with phase two of the process for the amount not to exceed eighty seven thousand dollars, and that is a budgeted item for this year. Uh, more specifically, the objective of phase two is they will work with us to develop an R F P document, which would be advertised. They will help us evaluate all the responses to that R F P and come up with a short list. Of, um, possible vendors that meet our needs and they will help us negotiate a fair contract and a scope of work with the vendors, um, so that we can make a decision on which direction to go. Um, the timeline for this project is probably about nine months, um, for this phase two. Which is good because that puts us ending up about our budget time when we're talking about budgets for next year. So this will give us an idea of what we're proposing to look at in terms of cost. Um, upfront cost and ongoing maintenance costs of whatever technology we implement. And we will be looking at budgeting and implementation if we move forward with next year's budget. I respectfully request your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Eldridge, seconded by Councilman Mbachi. Any discussion from the public? Discussion from council? Yeah, we'll vote.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Seven E, consider awarding bids for annual and semi-annual paving, asphalt mix, milling, mineral aggregate. Striping and pavement markings, concrete pipe and tire recapping. Ms. Mary Beth Elrod.
Uh, thank you, Mayor and Council. This is our annual and semi-annual bids for the Public Works Department. We were surprised to have, um, some, one of our largest items, paving. It came in a little bit cheaper than last year. Additionally, we had our H D P E pipe bid come in cheaper than last year, and we do buy quite a bit of that during the year repairing, um, stormwater items around the city. Um, all the other bids are just slightly up as expected in this economy. And you can review those. If you have any questions for me on those, just, um, feel free to ask those and I respectfully ask your approval for these.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll move.
Motion made by Councilman Gilbert, is there a second? Second by Vice Mayor Eldridge. Any discussion from the public? Discussion from council? Okay, take a vote.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Seven F, consider approval to purchase one tandem axle dump truck utilizing the statewide bid contract ID number seven five one nine three. Mr. Turner.
Mayor, members of council, you said this is on the statewide contract. This is a twenty twenty four model year and was supposed to be built this year. The price is a hundred and seventy nine thousand, eight hundred fifty one dollar.
Thank you.
Recommend approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Walker, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Eldridge. Any discussion from the public? Discussion from council? All vote.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Seven G, consider granting an easement to Upper Cumberland Electric Membership Cooperation for the Buck Mountain Water Tank Property. Uh, Mr. Turner.
Um, the city of Ballgood has a water booster station on this tank property and it is presently served by Upper Cumberland Electric. The, the city of Ballgood is revitalizing their pump station and needed upgrade on the electric service. So this easement, um. Over at the right top corner of this property is where the pump station currently sits and where the new station will sit as well. And it's just needed to serve the station. So I recommend approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Motion made by Councilman Baji, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Eldridge. Any discussion from the public? Discussion from council? All vote.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Seven H, consider awarding bid for standby generator for the Cookeville Water Treatment Plant. Mr. Turner.
We took sealed bids on the generator. Uh, we had one bid, W N O Construction, the Cummins Generator for one million, one hundred and nine thousand dollars. This project has to be complete using A R P money by twenty twenty six, September twenty twenty six. So that's why we went ahead and bid the generator separate instead of putting it in the construction because of the long lead time. You see, they estimated there about a hundred and eighty eight days. But I recommend approval for this purchase.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
The move.
Motion made by Councilman Baji, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Walker. Any discussion from the public? Discussion from council? Okay, all vote.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seven I, consider resolution R twenty four zero eight nineteen, authorizing the city of Cookeville to designate property located on Old Sparta Road as a park. Mr. Woods.
Thank you, uh, Mayor, members of council. Uh, as you know, the city continues to experience growth and residential development in the southern region of our community. And. Currently, we have no parkland south of I forty and our system-wide recreation plan that we adopted in twenty twenty one, as well as the city's twenty thirty comprehensive plan. Both outlined the need and call for park development south of the interstate. Uh, this resolution before you tonight helps, uh, get the city started down that path as it designates sixteen point six six acres on Old Sparta Road as dedicated parkland for the expansion and development of parks. And recreation services and amenities. Uh, here is a. Map, I thought. I'm going the wrong way again.
Meeting adjourned. Just kidding.
We'll get it.
Oh, okay, yeah. Doesn't work like that, does it?
Well, there are no photos there. Well, there are no photos there. Ran there earlier.
I saw them.
They were doing maps in somewhere. Yeah, they were, they were nice. I was going to wow you with some beautiful photography and, uh, show you the, the property, but, uh, this is a terrific site, site for, uh, park development, and, uh, when it's developed, uh, will fill a need in our community, and I would respectfully request your approval of this resolution.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Come with me.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Eldridge, seconded by Councilman Mbachi. Any discussion from the public? Question from council?
I think it'd be a great addition to our city, and I'm very excited. This is one of the best things the council's done, is, is add to our parkland and really build up our infrastructure in the city.
All right, any more discussion? Go ahead and take a vote then.
What's the name?
All votes correct?
We'll have to come up with a, yeah.
A contest.
Throw some names out there. We could have a contest.
Five yes, motion carries.
Yes. Thank you. Seven J, consider resolution R twenty four zero eight twenty, authorizing the grant, the grant application for the Blue Cross Healthy Place Grant Program. Mr. Woods.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, to help us get started, uh, developing that parkland, uh, that you just dedicated, we have the opportunity to apply for a Blue Cross Healthy Place Grant, which if received, would be applied toward creating a park on the old, uh, old Sparta Road property. This is a grant program of Blue Cross Blue Shield of Tennessee Foundation, uh, that encourages communities to develop spaces and places for citizen connectivity and healthy activities. Uh, grants are typically awarded for projects from, uh, a few hundred thousand dollars to several million dollars. Uh, we are still working on the possible amenities and potential layout of the park and the cost estimates to include in our grant application, and we'll, we should have that very soon. But if awarded, we would hope to begin work on this project in the summer of twenty twenty-five. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have, uh, but I would respectfully request your approval of this resolution authorizing us to apply for Blue Cross Healthy Place Grant.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Eldridge, is there? Second.
Second.
Second by Councilman Walker. Any discussion from the public? Discussion from council? Go ahead and vote.
All votes correct? Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, at this time, that will conclude the agenda portion of this meeting. Is there anyone who would like to speak to the council on non-agenda items? I see we've got a troop back here. Boy's got a troop. Y'all are troop.
Troop twenty and, uh, twenty-three nineteen.
Yeah, if y'all, y'all stand up, we'll, we'll recognize y'all. Thank y'all for coming tonight. Yes, it was a little bit longer. I apologize. Normally they're shorter, but yeah, thank y'all for coming tonight. We appreciate y'all being here. They're working on a certain badge. Is it?
It's a chip in the community card badge.
Okay, all right. Well, y'all have gotten a full dose of city council tonight, so thank you for being here. Um, I do want to make some announcements. We are, uh, going to be changing our work session. It falls on Labor Day, uh, Monday, the first. So we're going to be moving that work session to Tuesday, the second. No wait, yes. Oh, Monday is, I saw, sorry, falls on the second, Monday, the second. We're moving it to Tuesday, the third. Excuse me. It's literally written right there. Um, so we'll make that an announcement. Also do want to make an announcement that, um, Frontier is going to be doing some digging work coming up here in the city. We don't have a timeline of when that is, but we want to let people know that it's Frontier doing the work, that it's not the city of Cookville. Uh, we do have a contact information for Frontier. If you've got questions about any work that they're doing, we'll have it on our website. So you can post that. Uh, we do know last time we had, uh, some problems with it, people not being notified and wondering what was going on. So we're trying to kind of get ahead of it this time. So that will be on our website, uh, with the contact number for Frontier, if you do have any questions about that. And that is all I have. Anything anyone else has? Okay, meeting is adjourned.